Call the Village Board meeting to order with the clerk, please call a roll.
Trustee Gus.
Here.
Trustee Johnson.
Here.
Trustee Miller.
Here.
Trustee Addison.
Present.
Trustee Sidik.
Here.
Trustee Wells.
Here.
Attorney Forlone.
Here.
Mayor Hucker.
I'm here.
And Clerk McDonald is present.
All right, if you would all please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and its new republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got him. Larry got the memo too, I see.
Yeah, she does.
All right, our first item of business tonight is the Village Board regular meeting of October 10th minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes as presented? Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion by trustee Gus, second by trustee Miller. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Abstain.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, we need to pay some bills. We've got bills presented for payment in the amount of $134,885.10. Do we have a motion to approve?
Remove.
Second.
Motion by trustee Gus, second by trustee Miller. Any discussion on the bills? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Motion carries. We've got a little bit of special business to do tonight, and since the microphone's here, I will take the opportunity to read a proclamation. This proclamation is in appreciation for the hard work and dedication that the Memorial Day Planning Committee does. The committee includes the following people: Marilyn Schneider, the committee chair, Barbara Jaeger, Paul and Ann Last, Roger Luther, Hannah Laurie and Richard McFarland, village trustee Regina Miller, Jan Ochoa, Bill Rydel, as well as staff members Tracy Miracle and Donna Perez. And the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas on Memorial Day, Beach Park undertakes its solemn duty to remember the courageous men and women who made the ultimate sacrifice in the defense of our country and the cause of freedom around the world; and whereas the members of the Beach Park Memorial Day Committee have provided an opportunity for our residents to honor those who have died in our nation's service through planning and execution of the annual Memorial Day Remembrance Ceremony in Founder's Park; and whereas this remembrance ceremony has grown in attendance over the past several years and provides an opportunity for our community to come together to bring common voice to the values of patriotism, citizenship, commitment, honor, and duty; and whereas the work of the Beach Park Memorial Day Committee assures that we will never forget the freedom comes at a cost, and that it is our duty to uphold the principle that servicemen and women have fought and died defending. Now therefore, I, John Hucker, Mayor of the Village of Beach Park, do hereby recognize, salute, and profoundly thank each member of the Beach Park Memorial Day Committee whose work is providing meaningful service to this community. Dated today, October 19. I think there's probably a desire to take a photo or two, so if I could ask the committee members to join me up in front here.
Including trustee Miller.
Hey, you dressed up for it. Don't, don't, don't do that. Earrings and everything.
Come all the way up where the lights can be swirled in the eyes.
I know, I know.
My name was not on the list.
I hear bells. Yeah, my peanuts. I know, Donna took care of me.
Pardon, pardon, pardon. This one is yours, and here you go. You, and for you, you, you've got a beautiful. Well, you can hold the whole stack.
Wow.
I know, well, she probably decided to give you the evening off.
Ready? One, two, three.
Nobody said cheese.
Thank you.
One of us is in trouble. It's gotta be Larry.
Everyone gets a turn.
It's gotta be Larry this time.
Everyone gets a turn.
Okay. I get to have all the fun stuff. All right.
Now, Mayor, I was wondering why all these people were here. I think you should proclaim things more often and we'll have more of an audience.
Well, you know.
He's been doing it every board meeting.
If we can't get the Cub Scouts here, we'll get, we'll proclaim something.
Those Cub Scouts, one of those guys came to my house and I had to give him 15 bucks for a little bag of popcorn.
See, see, pretty, pretty smooth.
What you meant was it was your pleasure to support Cub Scouts by buying a bag of popcorn, right? I think that's what I heard.
I think that's.
I, I forgot to ask him if he had a peddler's license.
Did he have a bike?
I always thought it was.
No, he had a mop, oh.
Popcorn.
I was gonna say, well, pedaling, you know.
Oh, that kind of pedaling.
Yeah.
Oh, that was good.
All right, now would be the first of two opportunities to, for the public to comment. This would be for anyone that would wish to comment on any of the agenda items on our, for our meeting tonight. We have a second opportunity at the end of the meeting for any and all topics. Is anyone wish to address the board on any agenda topics?
Oh, thank you.
All right, then we will move on. Nothing spectacular for the mayor's report tonight. We'll move on to trustee reports. We've got trustee Gus up first.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just one item. Just a final reminder that this coming Sunday, October 27th, from 2:00 to 5:00, we have trick or treat. And while everybody's walking around with their children and the people are driving, tell everybody to be a little bit careful. We don't want nobody to get hit. And that is my report.
Very good. Thank you. Trustee Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a short report. The first item is a safety-related one, and that is the time is about to change November 1st, and it'll be dark earlier. We all know that the issues we've had with pedestrians and bicycles versus cars, and we just need to caution our, our residents and to caution their kids to be careful if you're out after dark. Wear something light, carry a light, wear something reflective. Be careful when you cross the street, cross at the intersection. We don't want any more, any more dangerous incidents to occur. So, especially in Sherman Road. The other item I have, oh, two more. Our next Finance Committee meeting is November 20th at 6:00 PM upstairs. And for those of you who weren't able to make it to the last Finance Committee meeting, McRibs, were had and enjoyed by all.
I understand. I missed that.
So you all missed that, that marvelous repast. That's all I have.
All right. And to, to piggyback onto your comments about traffic, we learned today, we had a meeting today with the Lake Shore Development Group, which includes mayors of the, our joint communities, Zion, Winter Harbor, Joyce Mason's District. And Representative Mason kind of organizes the event, gets everybody together. We had representatives there from the IDNR, as well as, we had a member of Congressman Schneider's staff there. And it was a good meeting. When you talked about pedestrians and bicycles, a statistic came up, apparently, if you're in an accident involving a, in an automobile, your likelihood of getting injured is around 30%. If you're in an accident with a vehicle and you're a pedestrian or a bicyclist, the odds of injury are 99%. So, now that kind of emphasizes, we had a nice presentation for the Trail Connectivity Plan that we've been working with, which is basically North Chicago up through Winter Harbor. And they're, they're making progress. They should have a draft plan to us in the spring and, or in the, in the late winter, and then the final plan sometime during the summer. So, they're making good progress and there's good information that they've gathered so far.
On that same topic, you mentioned Rep. Mason. Yeah, I went to her meeting at the, whatever that thing's called in Market Square, that restaurant, Bailey's, right? Bailey's. And looking down as heavily as I could, let her know that, how important that corridor is for us as far as safety goes. And also, I believe there is a meeting, an information meeting similar to one that was held at Bowen Park, scheduled in Zion in the next few weeks. I saw that on Facebook, I think. I don't know when that is. Does staff, do you know anybody?
It didn't, it didn't come up today, but.
No. We'll have to Google it. Put it on our website. Okay, thank you.
All right, moving on. Trustee Miller.
Thank you, Your Honor. As the mayor mentioned, the Northern Lake Shore Trail Connectivity Plan had their first open house a couple of weeks ago. But if you'd still like to make your opinions known about any challenges that you're aware of of walking or biking around the area, there is an online survey that you can take. There is a link on our village website provided. So if anybody is interested in doing that, just check out the village website and you can still give your feedback. The, the planning team for this project will be at the Zion Trail of Treats tomorrow. And this is going to be between 5:00 and 6:00 PM. So if you missed the open house, you can still go to this Zion event tomorrow and talk to a planner for the North Shore, Northern Lake Shore Trail. And tell them, you know, anything that you've got on your mind about things you've noticed around the county, around the community. So, secondly, it's time for the annual scary postcard of fire, fire, fire. This is for people who live adjacent to the Lions Woods Forest Preserve. And they are going to be doing an annual controlled burn soon. I got my postcard on October 19th. So it says during the next few weeks, people can expect to see evidence of the controlled burns. Of course, they always are very careful about choosing the dates, and they look at the weather also because they're trying to avoid blowing smoke, which can be kind of hazardous. And there will be information possibly on our website about this, too, if people would like to have more, or they have more questions. They can also visit the website for the Lake County Forest Preserve District as well. And then, thirdly, there is going to be, there are going to be two events this weekend. These are sponsored by Congressman Brad Schneider. He's going to be hosting them in Northeast Lake County on Saturday, October 26th. He's going to be hosting a Health and Wellness Fair. This is going to be held in Waukegan. And some of the things that are going to be available at this Health and Wellness Fair are flu shots, blood pressure checks, cholesterol readings, blood sugar checks, and some fun things for kids, like face painting and balloon artists. And we do have, we do have some information posted on our Facebook page, on Twitter, and on Nextdoor about this. And then also, on Sunday, the congressman is going to be hosting in North Chicago something called Congress on Your Corner. This is going to be at the North Shore Community High School on 17th Street. So, I mean, it's, it's open for anybody who's interested. It'll be held from 2:00 to 3:00 PM. Chance to meet the congressman, shake his hand, ask him some questions. Weather's supposed to be nice, so, you know, they're hoping for a good turnout. And information about that, too, can be found on our social media. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on, trustee Addison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The one item I wanted to share, the construction that's going on at Green Bay Road and Kenosha Road in that area, we've had a couple of, I've had a couple of complaints. I assume there's been more about bad sight lines when you're coming off of 29th Street. They put up a, a safety wall, concrete barriers to protect the workers during the project because it's on a curve, but it's making it pretty hard for people to see around. Adrian went and spoke with the onsite people running the show, and they said, "Too bad it's going to be there the whole time. It's a safety measure, so be careful." So that being said, there is a website that you can go to, the i dot site, it's called travelmidwest.com. If you want to look at any information, I'm sure there's contact information if you have comments about that. But it's, it's a dangerous intersection, and while it's under construction, it's a little more dangerous. But they always say things have to get worse before they get better, so I guess that's what they're planning on over there. It's.
Ironically, it's actually easier to get out from 29th Street onto Green Bay Road at night because you can see the headlights of the car that's behind the wall. During the daytime, if it's a small car, you're really having to look to even see a roof. So it's, they've, we've had accidents out there already, too, so, from that.
Right. Hopefully, they're, the cars are going a little slower because it's a construction zone, so the accidents won't be as bad, but. And that's, the other thing, the next Public Works meeting is November 12th at 6:00 PM upstairs, if anybody's interested. And that's all I have to share so far.
All right.
Thank you.
Trustee Sidik.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have one quick item. Last reminder that this Saturday, October 26th, from 10:00 to 2:00 here at Village Hall, is the Prescription Drug Takeback Day, sponsored by the Lake County Sheriff's Office. This is a free service, and all drop-offs are anonymous. One thing I did not realize, you know, people can drop off their expired or unwanted unused prescription solid drugs, but injectable drugs and syringes are not allowed. So I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of that. And again, that's 10:00 to 2:00 this Saturday. And that concludes my report.
Good. Thank you. Trustee Wells.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just have a reminder for the public that anyone that has questions about permits, need to pay a bill, or have any other issues that concerns them, the Village Hall is now open until 6:30 PM on Thursday evening to serve you better. And we also like to remind you that the Village Hall will be closed on November 28th, 29th, observation of Thanksgiving Day holiday. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right, moving on, we have under Administrator's Report, just acknowledgement that we have the Finance Report and the Public Safety Reports in your packet. Is there any questions or discussion on either of those? All right. Moving on to our Consent Agenda.
Mayor, can I bring up a couple of things?
I'm sorry, go ahead.
If you don't mind.
Sure.
Just wanted to bring up, so that the board knows, today, the village participated in a donation made by the Kristin family. Parents and relatives of TJ Kristin, who suffered a tragic death. And lucky for three other individuals, he was an organ donor, so he saved three lives through his passing. And the family, his mother Judy used to take TJ and his brother, they're twins, to the park, Founder's Park, when they were kids to play, and they played there for hours. So the family had donated, through the help of the Gift of Hope, donated a park bench at Founder's Park. And trustee Gus was kind enough to come out today and, and speak on behalf of the village, and that took place today at 1:00. And then, one other thing on, the village did participate, in case you see something out there. We participated in a meeting this morning. If you remember, we had a small anhydrous leak back in April 25th. And the Health Department had the Centers for Disease Control come out and do a little follow-up on it, and they came out with their report. And the county has put together a report and some things that they saw as recommendations out of that report. So they had a, a stakeholder meeting this morning, a kickoff meeting, to kind of start the process with this. And the village was a participant in that.
All right, thank you. Next, we have our Consent Agenda, which includes two items. First item is authorization of payment for, to Payne and Dolan for Pay Application Number Two, final, for the Village Hall lower parking lot in the amount of $5,122.69. Second being authorization of payment to Payne and Dolan for Pay Application Number Four, final, for the 2019 MFT Street Maintenance Project in the amount of $16,274.94. Do we have a motion to approve these under the Consent Agenda?
So move.
Second.
A motion by trustee Addison, second by trustee Sidik. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Carries. That's what happens when I don't tap my binder before the. Oh, boy. I'll get there, I promise. I'm almost there. Okay. It's frightening. Okay, next, on to ordinances and resolutions. Trustee Wells, you've got the first one.
Thank you, Your Honor. Having full consideration, Lord is approving the petition for Bartolo Martinez for Conditioned Use Permit to allow the use of a landscape contractor's storage yard in an AG district at 11075 West Wildwood Road. Mr. Martinez has filed a petition to allow for the use of the property as a storage yard. Is also interested in constructing a one-story cold storage building to be used for indoor storage of equipment, vehicles, and plants. According to the petition's background, some of there is currently a non-retail landscape commercial business currently located on this property. That's one before the Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals in October, recommended for approval. And I'd like to entertain it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion by trustee Wells.
Second.
Second by trustee Miller. Discussion?
I have two questions, Mayor. Normally, we, these, these condition use permits have a, have a, are for finite period. This one, I didn't see. Maybe I missed, I read too quickly, but I didn't see any period. This is indefinite. And the other question is, do we, are we asking for any screening or fencing, any vegetative screening between the storage area? I see it's quite a distance between a storage area and the neighbors to the south.
There are, the answer to your first question is, the reason there isn't a time limit on it is it's for the construction of the building, is what it is, to be able to put that building up, so we put it, it's for the indoor storage of that, and on the.
Well, no, my question was, normally, these have a, they're for five years or three years of renewable. This one appears to be, have no, no end to it. It appears to be indefinite.
That's what was requested, was to be able to have it just like that because it's a, it's an investment in the building that's being put on the property. Because the way that it is now, it, the way it was before, it should have had one before with the previous owner that was on there. But the way that we wanted to clean this up, instead of just, because it's an ag district. It's one of our couple of ag districts that we have in the village. So in order to be able to do what he actually wants to do with the storage, the indoor storage, he needs to put up that facility.
And the question, too, had to do with screening. I notice there's some distance, and it appears from the sketch there's some, already some vegetation there. We don't have any requirement for screening or vegetation?
Because of the existing vegetation that's on the lot, and with the way that, that was required that he not have any storage in those areas, there's vegetation all along the south, the west, and along the east, and then.
So you expect that won't be cleared for any reason?
No.
We don't, we don't mandate that it not be, but you, we don't see any reason it will be. Okay.
No.
That answered my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. And we did have neighbors from the south that were at the meeting, and that was all explained to them.
Yeah, it just, this just seemed a little bit unusual. That's why I had to ask those two questions.
It is a little bit unusual. It is, it is an unusual case because of the situation with this ag property.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I did have, did have a question also.
Sure.
During the public hearing there, the petitioner indicated that he would be possibly putting up some birmingham on the property. My concern was that we have no indication whether Birmingham is going to go, how it might impact drainage on the residents or other properties, surrounding properties. I just want to make sure your staff is mindful of that and that they actually monitor that, to make sure that any Birmingham that's constructed on the property doesn't have any adverse impact on any surrounding properties.
You can't construct Birmingham without putting on a permit.
Yeah, it's not included in the condition use permit.
It's not on, there's nothing, there's nothing that was put in the condition use with Birmingham.
Right, but it was mentioned in the property, and so I just want to make sure it was there on top, there on top of that.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Trustee Addison, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Pardon me, that was ordinance 35. Sorry.
I completely forgot.
Wait, wait, let's start over. Trustee Addison, you're up.
Oh, thank you. I do have a few things prepared. The first, it's a couple items kind of combined into one. There, it's some adjustments made to our ordinance Title 13, Chapter, Chapter 13 about water service. The two parts of this, the first one is kind of a housekeeping item. The practice that Public Works has been doing was not necessarily spelled out clearly in the ordinance, so we're changing the terms in the ordinance, just basically saying that the homeowner needs to pay the bill by the due date. That's, they're clearing that up in the ordinance, that it needs to be paid by the due date. The second part of this is actually, I have some notes, is adding a, let's see, a motion to approve the resolution, accepting a proposal. Nope, that's the wrong thing. I'm sorry.
B and C.
Yeah, well, there was an agenda mistake, so, but I'd already written notes on the wrong agenda, so I didn't transfer my notes to the correct agenda, so now my letters are all messed up. But that's not your problem. That's, that's my internal thing. This is what we're, it, it's an appeal process for when you're notified that your bill, that your water bill is past due and you're about to be shut off. We're giving a two-week period for the customers to come in and have an appeal process. The legal requirements regarding water shut-offs are very strict, and we need to allow proper due process.
So I believe our. Due process.
Our attorney recommended that we have this appeal process. And I remember there was some argument in our committee meeting as to whether it was 10 business days or two weeks. And we decided that that's the same thing, so that's, we changed the wording so they all say the same thing. It was, it was listed as both in different places, but we've cleaned that up. So I guess I'll put that in the form of an ordnance, a recommendation for, I already read. Motion to approve ordinance amendments Title 13, Chapter 13 dot 04, Beach Park Water Service.
Second.
Okay, so that, we'll take these in order. That would be item B on our current agenda. And because we do actually have two separate ordinances here. So on that, we have a motion by trustee Addison, second by trustee Miller, and that was the delinquencies portion, and.
The hearing portion.
The hearing portion is actually a separate ordinance.
Well, they're listed on the same sheet here. Do we need to take them separately?
You've got B and C. I would take them separately. Two different ordinances.
Okay, so let me amend my, my motion to pass the first part of the ordinance about the, the text amendment, just cleaning up, referring to paying your bills on the due date.
Second. Second amended.
We are amended, and discussion on the amended motion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Motion carries. That is number 36.
Okay, and then the second half will be the amendment in the ordinance, modifying the ordinance to allow customers the ability to appeal the charges, the new legal requirement for the appeal process.
Perfect.
And that's the form of a motion also.
By trustee Addison, second by trustee Miller. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Addison.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
Now that I think I'm not confused anymore, let's try this next one. This next one is about an engineering agreement for the design and the construction observation for our 2020 motor fuel tax road maintenance project. This is, the contract is an amount not to exceed $79,430. Again, this is for the design and for construction observation. So I will make a motion to approve a resolution to accept a proposal for RHMG Engineering for Design and Construction Services for the 2020 MFT Street Maintenance Project.
Second. Second. We have a motion by trustee Addison, second by trustee Gust. Any discussion?
I will add that that's one point nine seven miles' worth of roads that's getting done this next time, just if anyone's wondering.
Couldn't quite get it up to two.
No, but who knows? If the prices come in favorably, we may add it, three tenths.
We are doing a lot, we're going to be reconstructing some of the intersections along the ship, you know, add on any long there, so.
Yep.
Well, we're not giving two, two miles, we are giving much more than we need.
Perfect.
So if we added all those patches up, we might get three tenths of a mile out of it. So it's around two miles, we'll say, how about that?
Okay, any other discussion?
This is pretty proactive, I want to say, getting to this point, the year before. I could remember one year when we were still paving in November.
Yep.
So, no more, right, Chris?
Worried about the plant's closing at Thanksgiving time.
Exactly.
That's seven dollars and sixty-three cents a foot, just for the engineering.
Per square foot, or per...
Linear foot.
Linear.
I should, I didn't do the square foot.
Did you round it up to two miles?
Per cubic yard.
I could, I need a, I need a smartphone to do that.
Did you round it up to two miles, or were you...
No, I did one point nine seven.
Oh, okay.
I'm impressed you did that, I mean, that little flip phone, that thing's got a lot of stuff going on in there. It's awesome.
It's a bargain.
I have to ask complete control.
I think you were going to say roll call.
Trustee Gust.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next item, which I believe is E. Is that E on the corrected?
That's not U.
Yeah, it is.
It is? Oh.
See, you're looking at the wrong agenda, too.
Oh, gee, there you go.
This one, if you all recall, we did earlier this year, we passed an ordinance talking about some appearance rules for the small wireless facilities to be located in the village. This is that craze that's about to start going crazy with the 5G network, the small, they're shorter poles, they're not the big jet poles, and they call them small wireless facilities. We're kind of, our hands are tied in a lot of ways on what we can and can't do with this, so we, we had a recommend, recommended ordinances through the Illinois Municipal League of some ways to kind of control the appearance of some of them, so that may help a little bit. But this is the first one that's coming to us from a company wanting to try and, to start constructing these facilities. I'm imagining we're going to get several similar agreements. This one, I'll just read it, a resolution approving an authorization and execution of a master license agreement for the co-location of small wireless facilities located within the municipal right-of-ways, or rights-of-way, and this is a partnership with Verizon Wireless. They're the first ones coming in for this, so I guess I'll, that's the form of a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion by trustee Addison.
Second.
Second by trustee Gust. Discussion? I know, this is, I, I know our attorney's, this is, this is pretty much your model ordinance.
Right, I, just, a little bit of background, the Small Wireless Facilities Deployment Act was passed back in twenty-eighteen, the end of the year, you passed an ordinance based on the Illinois Municipal League to exert as much control as possible over the installation of these facilities, knowing that we're limited on what we can do. The statute has tied our hands, as the mayor has said, to really allow for this rollout on the theory that it's going to benefit everybody, right? It's going to make cell service better in all of the communities that it serves. The idea behind this is not to create a bunch of new poles, it's to co-locate where possible, smaller equipment on municipal utility poles, on comm ed utility bowls, poles, et cetera. What this license agreement does, and we've negotiated this with Verizon on behalf of our municipal clients, probably twenty-five different municipalities, we believe it allows us to exert the maximum control possible in protecting the right-of-way and controlling the right-of-way. There are provisions in this agreement that require Verizon to provide insurance and evidence of insurance, naming the village as an additional insured, or if they're self-insured, they don't have to name us as an additional insured, but the idea is insurance in the event of liability out there, there's indemnification of the village by Verizon, AT&amp;T might come down the line with another request for an agreement. Verizon has to apply to install their small cell equipment, they have to submit a separate application for each site. There are site-specific applications that have to come in under the rules we've set up in this agreement. If you approve the, the site-specific application, chances are we're going to have to do that, they pay an annual fee, two hundred dollars a year for each site-specific application to the village. We did pass in April, as trustee Addison mentioned, small wireless facility design, stealth, and concealment standards. If you recall, we, we brought that to you, which were, which were adopted by resolution. These will be provided by staff to Verizon, so they're aware of our design features. The idea behind those design standards is to minimize the impact of this equipment, to require this equipment to be stealth where possible, as small as possible, and not as obtrusive as, you know, as it otherwise could be. So, Beach Park is situated with the passage of this agreement and standards in the ordinance you did back in twenty-eighteen as best as you can be at this point, so that I'd recommend that it, this agreement be approved.
Yeah, the question.
Will my phone work better?
I think it will, I, you know, that's the idea.
When you mentioned sites, is that per square mile, or what is a site consist of?
Site can be anywhere on the right-of-way where there's typically a pole, where there's a utility pole that they can co-locate on. If, if they're looking at a location, trustee Miller, where there is no pole, they can make a request to put in a new pole. We, the idea behind that is to eliminate or limit new poles as much as possible. So sites can be anywhere along the right-of-way that they have deemed valuable sites to improve cellular service.
So it's pretty much at their discretion?
Yeah, yeah.
I think the question, I think, or if that's not her question, it'll be mine, is how, we have no idea yet if it'll be five poles, or fifty poles, or five cells, or fifty cells, we don't know.
That's correct.
We don't know what the propagation study is going to show.
If you want to get an idea of what they look like, on Lewis Avenue at the, in the Wesley Methodist Church, there is a freestanding pole that was put up just for one of these facilities as a test or early whatever, so you can get an idea of what they look like.
It's in the city of Waukegan.
It's in Waukegan, right, but I believe our standard makes it so they're going to be a little more attractive than, than that, some screening up top. But like the attorney said, that the idea is to encourage them to co-locate on an existing pole, they can even use light poles and other things like that.
Well, there's some misunderstanding at our, at our committee meeting, because I heard somebody, I don't know what your agreement maybe, somebody said that they don't expect them to go on comm ed poles, that they don't want to go on comm, or comm ed doesn't want them, which means they're going to put in new poles in my neighborhood, that's the only pole there, is comm ed.
Comm ed's going to be pretty limited, too, as, as we are, to, to say no. It's, the, the idea behind this act is to get this equipment out there, to get 5G established.
I get it, it's a federal initiative.
It's a federal initiative, correct, so comm ed's going to be pretty limited, too. To the extent that a small cell, a piece of equipment, doesn't affect comm ed services just like us, to the extent it doesn't impact our services, and it simply is a co-location, we're going to be, it's going to be tough to say no.
Well, comm ed's already allowed other utilities under poles, so I don't know how to be able to tell these people no.
I don't think they're going to be able to, trustee.
On the other hand, your 3G flip phone will probably need to be upgraded to receive any benefits.
Probably a 4G?
Or all the way, all the way to the five. Sorry.
You get too close to one of these new poles, and that thing might pop in your pocket.
You can get the Google and the interweb.
Oh, boy.
Both, so, and the Facebooks.
Oh, my.
Yep, yep, so that's all good. All right, we've talked the heck out of this. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gust.
Aye.
And that is a resolution number thirty-one. We are, yep, and the previous resolution was number thirty, if you were, we're back and forth here a little bit.
I believe that concludes my portion of the evening.
You did a fine job, I'd like to thank you. Trustee Johnson, you've got...
Thank you, mayor, I have two items on the agenda tonight. The first item, if any of you have ever paid a mortgage off early, you know how good that feels, and you know what benefit that is in terms of the lifetime cost of that investment, we propose to do that here. We have bonds outstanding that were, were sold for the building of the Public Works facility. The, the remaining amount due is one million, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. By paying them early, the, the interest savings will be four hundred and five thousand, approximately a little bit over that, over the remaining life on the, on the bonds. However, that same money that we're going to use to pay that would likely accrue us interest in the amount of two hundred and thirteen on in the investment, so, but the net is, over the, over the life of these bonds, remaining life of these bonds, it saves the village of over two hundred thousand dollars. So, I'd like to offer an ordinance providing for the redemption and payment prior to maturity of one million, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, general obligation bonds, parentheses, alternative revenue source, closing parenthesis, Series two thousand and ten of Village Beach Park, Lake County, Illinois. Oh, one thing I forgot to mention, we're going to have to take this from reserve to pay it, and depending upon, we've, we've been running surpluses, as you all know, every year, happily, knock on wood, and presuming that that continues, how much we'll have to borrow from reserves remains to be seen. We may need to come back to the board to amend our, our policy on reserve amounts until we can recover the reserves, but this is a smart thing to do now.
And, and it would, it would add on to that, it would be our intention to use the offsetting gain, if I can say it that way, the, the debt service principal and interest that we would have been paying out on an annual basis to replenish those reserves as soon as possible. So it would be a very short inconvenience in that respect.
And it won't leave us that short, the reserves will still be ample.
No.
I will second Don's motion, by the way.
We have a motion and a second, a discussion?
I would just like to make a comment, too, you know, and one of the other good things about why we're doing this is that as the principal payments continued over the life of the bonds, they were going up every year instead of the reverse, you know, you think the principal's going to go down, but because of the nature of how these bonds were combined into one bond, we were facing an increase, a pretty big increase every year, so we're going to avoid all that, too.
Yep. Other discussion?
Yeah, I just think it's great that we're in a position to do this. The bonds are taken out as a general obligation bond, which means if the village can't afford it, the citizens are automatically obligated to pay it in the form of a tax. So anytime we can pay one of these off early without affecting our, our budget and our expenditures, it's a good thing for everyone in the village. And it's a beautiful building, hopefully now that it's going to be paid off, the roof won't start leaking and the furnace go out and all that other stuff. But anyways, it's, it's great to be in the position to be able to do that.
I, I would like to add on to that, and speaking of the position we're in, the privilege of, of being able to sit here tonight and, and even talk about prepaying something at a time when so many communities are, and taxing bodies of all sorts are extending bond durations, refinancing, getting a lower interest rate and stretching it out longer, refinancing a bond and then using the proceeds for other purposes, never mind those that are using the short-term bonds just to make payroll. We are definitely here in Beach Park not in that position, it's under any of our watch. I would say that it's safe to say we never will be by any intent.
I think we should have a mortgage burning ceremony and winnie roast over there.
I, I like the idea, there should at least be a cookie shared amongst all of us, or something.
Well, this time of year, you want hot chocolate, or cider or something, and, and hot, and wieners.
There you go. Fire in the parking lot.
Sure.
Yeah, we must have some hot dogs laying around somewhere.
Diesel, we have a diesel.
So, I, I do believe that as, as the village goes, that this puts the village, assuming this passes, into a debt-free situation, correct? Bond, a bond-free?
No.
Yes, and when I say debt-free, we have, of course, another bond issue out there for our Tiff District, but that is a obligation on the Tiff District itself, so it's, it's, we have other loans for specific projects that are secured by other sources, but for any, any general debt from the village, or for our practical purposes, we can kind of celebrate that as a, as a, as a term for the, the direction there, so, very happy. All right, roll call, please.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gust.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And with your leave, I'll bring the next item to the table. The next item is a resolution, this is in the form of a motion with some explanation, a resolution accepting the proposal from Webb's, WBS Excavating Company, Inc., for demolition services of a structure at 12723 Twenty-first Street in the amount of sixteen thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars and no pennies. And this is a, a structure that the village code enforcement has been working on for a long, long time to bring into compliance, and this is the ultimate resolution. They've, we've obtained authority to, to do this demolition through the Circuit Court system, and there will be an effort to, to be reimbursed through the state APP, I don't remember what that acronym stands for, grant program to cover these costs, and, and staff did obtain competitive prices, and this is the best price.
To, to expound on that, I do believe this goes back maybe even to year one of the village, certainly in the early nineties.
Ninety-seven.
And, and there was, that was our first formal action, but leading up to that was years of frustration, and, yeah, so here we are, twenty-some years later.
Takes a while.
Yep, yep, so, all right, so that was a motion.
We're lacking a second, though, we may not have.
Motion by trustee Johnson, second by trustee Miller. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sidik.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.
Aye.
Trustee Gust.
Aye.
Trustee Johnson.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
That was a, another great opportunity to use those abandoned property grants to solve problems. Appreciate the staff taking the steps necessary to secure those grants. Have no items listed on the agenda under new business?
I have something, mayor, if I may.
Sure.
We have a renowned expert on Illinois' marijuana rules here among us tonight, and I keep reading the paper that, that our neighboring communities are all taking action, either yea or nay on this, or kicking it down the road, or doing referenda, or surveys, or whatever. And I'm wondering, A, what, what is the window like, counselor, and B, does our mayor or administrator have any plans to bring this to the board in one form or another?
Sure. I think we talked about this at the last meeting, or maybe a meeting before that.
My memory's short.
Yeah, in my opinion, if you're going to opt out and not allow dispensaries, you should do that by the end of the year. You should pass an ordinance that prohibits cannabis-related business by the end of, of You should pass an ordinance that prohibits cannabis-related business by the end of this year. If you are not going to opt out and you're going to let things play out, I also would recommend that the zoning process get going and get implemented by the end of the year. And we're running out of time to do that. You've got to publish hearing to do that, and you should start to think about where you might want to see a dispensary or business like that located. So my recommendation is to both scenarios is to get something in place by January one. The opt-out certainly for sure. Relative to the zoning, if you don't get it in place by January one, there's the concern that dispensary would come in and ask to be located in a retail area, because that's what they are, the general business district. So if you've got thoughts other than the general business district where retail is allowed, we should implement that, get that process going, and pass those ordinances.
Now, if we did a hasty zoning change as an interim measure, and no one came forward with a business in the meantime, we could then later amend it if we run out of time.
You could. You certainly could.
And if we neglect to opt out, what's the downside of that? Then by default, it's permitted?
It's permitted in my interpretation of that, and you could have license holders come to you. You know, the medical license holders are going to be the first.
Which we have none shown at.
You have none, but those that do have medical licenses.
They can get elsewhere. Got it, got it.
They can get a secondary location. So a medical license holder in Waukegan, for example, can get a license for a secondary location and go anywhere with that.
Are they limited to number of locations? So they can have a second and tertiary?
What I'm reading is a secondary at this point, so a second, so two. There's the concern that they come to you, and if you're not ready, again, you're going to be looking at a general retail location, which may be okay. You know, that may be, what I'm seeing is sort of a different approach. When medical came online back five years ago, the idea was to hide these facilities, put them in industrial areas where no one could find them or see them. That's what almost every community did.
Destination.
With the recreational, what I'm seeing as far as zoning where it's allowed, they're putting it on Main Street.
It's a Starbucks model.
They're putting it on, it's on Main Street, and the idea behind that is if you're going to allow it, you should pass, you know, the tax ordinance, we should get that in play, and put it in an area where it's going to be seen and frequented. Relative to the tax ordinance, if this is something that's going to be allowed here, it's looking like in the veto, the original bill said taxation could not start until September 1st. That's what the law says. It looks like in the veto session, there's going to be a change that's going to say taxation can start July 1st, which means IDOR requires a 90-day window. We would have to get our tax ordinance to IDOR, and I'm not sure where the board stands. If you're going to allow it, by April 1st, you have to get, so there's work to do. I would say get your zoning done, if possible, by the end of the year. Opt out for sure by the end of the year if that's where you're headed, and pass your tax ordinance by April 1st if it's going to be allowed. So those are the three factors we have to consider.
To add on to your question about administration intent, staff has been attending various informational seminars, tracking very closely what is going on in adjacent communities, what steps others are taking. There's actually a meeting where our council will be next Wednesday.
I was alluding to that. That's why I was praising his expertise.
And staff will be in attendance at that as well. And of course, anybody else that wants to go to it could attend to that in addition to that. And Jerry and I are talking about this almost on a daily basis to try to at least formulate what our options are and then get them back to the board as quickly as we can, so that's kind of where we're at. Did you want to add anything to that, Jerry?
Probably what's going to happen after this last meeting, if they feel obligated to listen to our attorney next week, so we're going to go to that last meeting.
There's a lot of questions.
I hope I keep you awake, Jerry.
The other thing is that I'm kind of waiting for the veto session to see what comes out of it. There's no J-Car rules at all on the cannabis. Nothing's out, and they're not coming out until December. Waiting for the veto session to see what changes in it. But probably what's going to happen, and that we have talked about, is we'll probably go to finance at your next meeting. We should have enough information, we'll be able to do that. It will not make zoning this year. We don't have the time to do that, because we need a recommendation come out. Probably what's going to happen is the village will take a, we're going to have to do an ordinance to administratively, you know, put a hold on it for 90 days, which will give us time, you know, to go to, if we have to go to zoning, to be able to go to zoning, publish it, and notice it up to go to zoning. But to come out of finance after the 18th, 18th? 18th of November, there's not enough time to notice up for a zoning meeting in December.
Right.
Legally, so we would have to, it wouldn't be till after the 1st of the year, so.
If it was the board's desire to say no, that could happen by year end. If we're going to go through zoning, and that's kind of why we're looking at bringing it to Finance Committee, obviously, assuming we have our ducks in a row, by then we'll encourage the entire board to be able to attend public meeting. We can have our discussion there, see if we can get a recommendation out of committee to, for a direction. And again, if it was to prohibit, then that's an action that we could take by year end. If the decision of the committee to recommend to go ahead into zoning modifications and that, then we'll probably set up a brief moratorium.
Well, we could do that. I'm just thinking maybe it would be wiser to just get the consensus of the council of the board before we start going down that road. If the consensus is we're not interested, why even take it to the Finance Committee?
Well, the Finance Committee is the next public meeting that we have access to the board. All board members are welcome in discussion.
Of course. No McRibs necessarily.
And be held, yeah, no McRibs. But that is the closest we can get to the, what we feel will have our information together.
And that's, I welcome that. I mean, you're all welcome to come. I just, I'd hate to see, A, if the three of us are not interested, and the other four are, you know, we don't want to be a roadblock. But, so that's kind of why I'd like to get the consensus of the entire board.
The only other direction we could have would be to call either a committee or the whole meeting, which of course we can't make any decisions at, or get it on the agenda for a board meeting and hash it out at the board meeting. Sorry.
Well, if needs be, if you call a special. You did call a special meeting.
There you go. I want to put in my two cents, when we discussed the subject, I believe it was our priority session quite a bit earlier in the year, it appeared that there wasn't going to be a definitive yea or nay when we were polling the board members. It was starting to look like a tie. I put it in writing at that time to the previous administrator and to the mayor that if that's the case, I just, I am opposed. I think we should ban it, but I'm only one vote. I had suggested at that time, which would have given us plenty of time to get this done by the end of the year, but it hasn't. I suggested at that time that we take our model zoning that we've put in place for the medical use and put the same restrictions for the recreational use. In my opinion, it's a destination thing. If the people who are going to use it know where it's at, they're going to go there. I personally would prefer it's not on Main Street. So that's why I recommend it may be modeling our ordinance to have it be in out-of-the-way places. I believe according to our medical marijuana dispensary ordinance, there was only like two areas in the village, one area in the village that qualified for that, and I'm very comfortable with that for the recreational retail establishment, too. I don't want it on Main Street, but again, that's just my opinion. So it's disappointing that we're at this point now where we're saying we can't get it done by the end of the year, because we talked about this quite a while ago. I understand the desire to listen to what other communities are doing and try and see what we can restrict and what we can't restrict and whatever else, but now here we are saying that we don't have time to get it done by the end of the year, like our attorney has recommended that we do.
Well, I think that there's been some changes in the climate, if you will, since then, looking at all the neighboring communities that are deciding up and down, and that hasn't apparently changed, Trustee Anderson's opinion, but others may have, and they may be realizing that it's an inevitability here in our vicinity. So that it may be something that others might want to reconsider. And as far as that zoning goes, my recollection is we zoned it down to a parcel so small that it wouldn't have met the requirements for the state.
Or it hasn't met the requirement.
Basically zoned it out of existence. And, I mean, if that was the intention, if we had to do that, we could also do this, but apparently we can just opt out if we choose to do that as well.
No, there was one location that's eligible.
I thought it didn't meet the space requirements and parking.
That may have been for a growing facility, but not for the dispensary.
But anyway, it was a very limited space.
And there's more to this than just, as we talked about at the last meeting, than just the retail component. Other things that fall into the act are the growing, the infusing, the transportation of, the retail aspect, and there's one more.
Processing.
Processing. So there's five different potential businesses that could spring up out of this one state act, and that's what we've been trying to understand. Everybody wants to focus on the retail sale, but we also have to decide, how do we feel about a trucking company or a transportation company that wants to move vehicles in and out of the village, maybe with giant marijuana leaves on the side of it or something, I don't know what they're going to be? Or do we, if we have somebody that wants to move into one of our buildings and start infusing things with the THC and what have you?
Or self-storage facility.
It could be almost anything.
And I think what you can do, you can allow, if you want this in this direction, you can allow a dispensary and prohibit the other types of businesses. So that's an option, too. I've seen that.
Or you could allow a certain pick, or allow everything, or allow nothing.
Right, exactly right.
All the focus is on the retail component.
Yeah, I've seen none of it other than the news articles.
Yeah, I think what's happening is most communities that are saying no are saying no to everything. Most that are saying yes are saying yes to everything. I can say, my understanding is Winthrop Harbor, Zion, Waukegan have all taken some form of allowing the retail sale, whether it's being restricted by zoning or what have you, but they have said, they have not said no. A lot of the southern communities, including Gurnee, has Gurnee made a decision yet?
If he had a public hearing.
No, they had a disappointing poll results, as the mayor said the other day.
Oh, yeah, yeah, a form poll, yeah.
So there's a little bit up and down all over, and like you say, I think it's a, initially it's kind of like the video gaming, where a lot of people just said no because there was no other information available, what it was going to be, what it would look like. And that may well be the case here once the inevitability of it strikes, or maybe that people stand firm after they've said no, so.
Well, can we do what some other communities that I've read have done and just put out a flat six-month moratorium before the end of the year?
What our interim administrator is recommending is a short.
For zoning interim.
Yeah, I've seen towns do that.
Right.
I think Gurnee might have done that.
And the county.
What was it, pardon me?
County also.
County did as well.
I've seen so many ordinances, but I've seen that, that approach.
That's the safety net, if we can call it that. That prevents the knock on the door at the 11th hour saying it's time. And we've kind of had that in our back pocket, and I understand your frustration, Trustee Anderson, about why we're not at the point of decision yet. We're not usually the first ones into the pool when there's something controversial like this. We do like to kind of watch what transpires and let some of these fights and arguments get the headlines, hear what the pushback is and where it is, and then move from there. So it's, may not, that's kind of my nature anyway, and we've been kind of held that position on several other things over the years. So we'll get it done, no doubt. I don't, we don't have anybody knocking on the door. As soon as Zion and Winthrop Harbor said yes, they had people knocking on the door after that, so clearly those that have the licenses are going to go to the places with the least resistance. They're not going to want to force their way into a community. We're certainly not a, Gurnee might have somebody forcing their way in because they're a retail center, but I don't think we're going to be viewed that way, so.
I believe Wadsworth has said yes, but limiting it to one.
No, Wadsworth has a licensing program, so it's kind of like their liquor license. So they have, I think, six licenses, but there are no licenses to issue until somebody comes in and asks for them.
Okay.
I'd like to ask the attorney. I read somewhere that the state is still having meetings about how this is all going to roll out, but they haven't even decided ultimately. I read that it was going to be some kind of a meeting in December.
Well, there could be rulemaking committee, the rulemaking committee could get together, but this is going to roll out January 1st. The sponsors of the bill have said that. The initial licensing phase, the applications are all in, that process is moving.
Okay.
So there's not going to be a delay. We could get clarification through the rulemaking procedure if that's initiated.
That's what it is.
You may get some changes in the veto session to the law that relate to the cannabis lounges where cannabis can be consumed on site. There's the taxation that I just talked about a few minutes ago. That's going to be a change in the veto session. There could be some clarification, but it's going to come January 1. I mean, we have to be ready for that. And it wasn't Gurnee. Graves Lake did a moratorium. It was Graves Lake where they opted out and they instituted a one-year moratorium where they asked staff to review it and come back and make a recommendation sometime in 2021. So we could do something like that for a shorter, a shorter period of time. I think that is your safety net.
Thank you.
Answer all your questions, or at least.
I'm good for now, and I don't know that I'll make it up to run late, but I think we just got the whole session, right?
Yeah.
Well, so, I mean, are we in agreement to do that, instead of having it go to finance and talk about it again, or should we just at the next board meeting vote on a moratorium, a temporary?
I think as long as we have the moratorium in place in December, which we have a meeting in November and a meeting in December, we'll get the opportunity to have a frank discussion and with the most current information that we have from staff and ideally be able to pick some directions. We've got to talk about taxation, we've got to talk about the uses, and, you know, we've got to give staff some direction in order to get some ordinances drafted and written or the moratorium or whatever we choose to do, so.
We don't want to miss a big green boat.
Big green boat?
Big green boat.
Sounds like a cruise ship.
Yeah.
All right, any other new business? All right, now is the time for any citizen which would wish to address the board on any topic, any topic at all, come to the podium, let us have your name and state your case.
My name is Sarah Duffield. I've been a resident of Beach Park for 15 years. It's the first time I've ever been here, except for my kid's preschool graduation. I received a letter this weekend saying that I have to pay you $60 a year, $5 a month because I don't have city water. And I'm really wondering why, because I have a well. I don't have any problems. It seems like you guys have something against people who have wells. I don't know why, but I don't understand why I have to pay for something I don't use.
Have you had any conversations with staff yet?
No, I actually wanted to come here because you are the ones who passed the ordinance.
Sure. I can enlighten you to a point, and then I'm going to probably refer you over to staff to get the details. Well, the short answer is that we have a water system throughout the village without a mandatory connection. Most communities have a mandatory connection. When the water mains in front of your house, you must connect to it. We, as a village, chose not to take that path, and that gave people the freedom to choose whether they would use their well or use municipal water, or in some cases, both, exterior watering and irrigation on the well and interior municipal water. The reality of that water system is it costs money to maintain and to plan for repairs and upgrades and testing and all of those things. And there is a direct benefit to all residents that live adjacent to water mains in the fact that, A, if the well fails, a connection to water is less expensive in most cases than replacing the well. Secondly, that the fire protection, fire hydrants, et cetera, are in place.
That's what I figured you guys would use.
Yeah.
I can't, my well is $60,000 for me to connect, so it would be cheaper for me to fix my well.
I'm sorry, sixty?
$60,000.
Where do you live?
29th Street.
Okay.
On the west side of Green Bay. The line's on the other side of the road, so it was $1,000 a lineal foot.
That's a horrible quote.
You might want to get another price.
Well, that was, you know, that's the only quote we've ever gotten, and that was when there was a drought in our neighborhood and everybody came around and said.
I know somebody on 29th Street that's connecting now for $10,000.
Yeah, I still can't do it. There's just, I mean, physically can't, and I just, I have a really hard time when people tell me I have to stop my doll do.
I understand, I understand.
Especially when it's on the other side of the streets, and I kind of figured you guys would use the fire hydrant as super.
Well, it's one of the legitimate reasons, it's, again, it's a maintenance fee for the system to keep it in place and keep it operating. Should the day come where you absolutely have to have it, I guarantee you, you won't pay that much to connect to it, but.
If my well fails, I will have to destroy my home leave because that is the only way I could afford to leave my house, so.
Some areas, they call it an availability fee, just to help with the maintenance of the system, like it is available when you're ready to hook up to it. Also, I believe your homeowner's insurance should be discounted a small amount because there's fire hydrants in the area.
You know, I have two, so I have one on one side and one on the other. People.
So there is, I mean, you could, you could look at it as a balance with a discount on your homeowner's insurance.
That's great. I mean, I get what you guys think, but as the person who has to pay the money for something, it's kind of, it's like walking into a store and the store saying, well, you're here, so you're not going to buy it, but you have to pay me. You're not going, but you're here, you know, you're using my space, so you have to pay me for nothing. That's, it's just, I'm sorry, but that's okay. That's what I, so I've been set for that whole year.
Okay, well, thank you. Thank you for coming. Is there anyone else that would wish to address the board tonight? All right, we have no cause tonight for an executive session.
Mayor, it would be my pleasure to offer a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion by Trustee Jensen and a second by Trustee Sittick. Discussion, roll call, please.
Trustee Gus.
Aye.
Trustee Jensen.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Anderson.
Aye.
Trustee Sittick.
Aye.
Trustee Wells.